Well, good evening from the auditorium of Shakopee High School and welcome to the 2013 Shakopee School Board Candidates Debate. We thank you all for your participation in our electoral process. My name is Rob O'Neil. I'm the pastor of Brookwood Community Church and the moderator for tonight's debate. Tonight's debate is being sponsored by the Shakopee Chamber and Visitors Bureau and by Shakopee Public Schools. The views expressed in tonight's debate are those of our candidates, not those of the Chamber and Visitors Bureau or of Shakopee Public Schools. The Chamber and the school district are sponsoring this event as a service to our community and have gone to great lengths to ensure the objectivity of this forum. A statement describing the steps that the Chamber has taken in order to ensure its objectivity is available here in the auditorium this evening. All the candidates who have filed to run for Shakopee School Board and have been able to demonstrate evidence of a campaign were invited to tonight's debates. Candidates are arranged in the order in which they'll appear on the November 5 ballots. Candidates will have one minute to make opening statements, after which I'll ask candidates questions. They'll each have one minute to respond, and in some cases their opponents will be given 30 seconds to make rebuttal remarks. Also, as the moderator, I'll have an opportunity to ask follow-up questions in which case candidates will be given 30 seconds to follow up. Our candidates are Chuck Berg, Sean Hallett, Jeremy Casper, Mary Romansky, and Scott Swanson. Each candidate will now have an opportunity to make a one-minute opening statement, and we'll begin with Mr. Berg.
Thank you, Rob, and thank you to the Chamber and its public policy committee for putting on this debate, and also to the Shakopee Public Schools for lending their facilities. My name is Chuck Berg. I've lived in this town for just under 50 years now, and my wife has joined me here for the last 27 years. The pressure's off now because I got that one right. I have served in this community in a number of fashions. I own my own business here and have for a little over 15 years now. I'm a member of the Shakopee Rotary Club and served as their president in 2006 and served as the district governor for the southern half of Minnesota in 2011-12. I served on the school board six years ago, and I only chose not to run two years ago because of my commitment to Rotary. And I'm excited at the opportunity to return to the schools and hopefully make the opportunity for our youth better every day. Thank you.
Mr. Casper?
Thank you. So, my name is Jeremy Casper. I have lived in Shakopee for about six years. I have a wife, Kate, who is a photographer. I also have three children, Eevee, Logan, and Helena. As we start to talk about the enrollment growth in the district, I'm one of those who has caused part of that problem that we're facing since they are just coming into the district. Along with being here for six years, I have been involved in the community, getting involved right away, almost months after moving here with the Trans Advisory Commission for the city of Shakopee. I've also been involved in parks and trails design for Scott County, been involved with the Technology Advisory Steering Committee for the Shakopee Schools along with the Curriculum Advisory Committee. So, I've definitely shown that I have been willing to invest my time into the community. I work within Shakopee at the Scott Carver Dakota Cap Agency in IT, and I believe that will help me in being an effective board member.
Ms. Hallett?
Hi, my name is Sean Hallett. I have lived in Shakopee for 12 years with my husband Todd and our two sons, Sam, who's in seventh grade, and Jake, who's in fifth grade. I am currently employed by Shakopee Schools. I'm the volunteer coordinator for Red Oak and Eagle Creek Elementary Schools. I've been doing that for the last five years, and I added Pearson Sixth Grade Center as well last year. I am running for school board because I really am passionate about giving our children a great educational experience here in Shakopee. Every student that we have is going to be affected by the decisions that are made in the next few years, and I think it's really important that we get it right.
Ms. Romansky?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Chamber and everyone else who made this event possible this evening. My name is Mary Romansky, and I've been on the Shakopee School Board for 16 years. I have my husband, who I've been married to for 32 years, who's the technology director for the Burnsville-Egan-Savage Schools. I have a son, Christopher, who graduated in 2001, who's a civil engineer, and my daughter, Katie, who graduated in 2006, who's on her way becoming an early childhood special ed teacher. I studied Spanish and Portuguese at the University of Minnesota and served in the U.S. military as a Russian linguist, and also for the Department of Defense as a Portuguese linguist. I started a program called Good to Go Kids. It's a nonprofit that helps students in any way possible with their needs in the school system. Presently, we are serving students at Jackson Elementary with a weekend food program as well as at the high school and at the co-op.
Mr. Swanson?
Good evening, and thank you to everybody who made tonight possible. These are exciting times for Shakopee. We've got 2,000 students projected over the course of the next 10 years, and that does not include the increase that will be as a direct result of the 4,500 jobs we expect to bring into the city as well as the all-day kindergarten. I have had the very good fortune to serve on the Shakopee School Board for the course of the last two years and was able to help shape the current state of our district as it sits today. In order for us to capitalize on the opportunities that are presented by the increase in enrollment that's coming our way, we need leadership, we need strategic planning, and we absolutely have to have collaboration. I have those skills, and I expect to bring them to the table, working with the Shakopee School District again. Keeping an eye on fiscal responsibility, I hope to partner with administrative staff as well as my fellow board members to help raise the academic achievement for Shakopee using opportunities to make sure that our kids can recognize their fullest potential.
Well, our first question this evening actually comes from surveys that the school district has done. In a recent survey, parents indicated that they're concerned about the sizes of the classes in our district. The question is, do the facts bear that out? And if so, what can the school board do to address that concern? Mr. Swanson will begin with you.
It's my understanding that, looking at the 2013 projections for September, that our kindergartners are enjoying class sizes of around 20. We look at first and second graders, and we're looking at class sizes upwards of 22 max, and that's our district cap. And then, fourth and fifth graders, or excuse me, third and fourth graders, we're looking at 24. At fifth grade, we go up to 27. I would submit to the folks that have some concerns about our elementary building specifically that those are very, very low class sizes.
Mr. Casper, class sizes. Do the facts bear the parents' concern out? And if so, what can the school board do to address that concern?
Well, again, as that survey pointed out, that that was one of the concerns from parents was the class sizes. When looking at comparison districts, we have found that Shakopee actually has lower class sizes than a lot of our peer districts around the area. So, no, the facts don't bear them out. I think that is partly the responsibility of the school board to make sure that we are effectively communicating that out to the community that Shakopee really does have good class sizes and that it's a perceived problem, not an actual problem.
Let's move now to a question about measuring performance. What gaps are there in the performance between the different schools in the district, and how do you account for them? Ms. Romansky, we'll start with you.
Fortunately, I can say that there aren't a lot of gaps among all their elementary schools. It's primarily because we teach the same thing at every school, and we only hire staff that are very well-qualified, and we all, we have different means of intervention to help prevent students from failing.
Mr. Berg, what would you say about performance? Are there performance gaps between the schools and the district? And if so, how do you account for them?
In the aggregate, I think the data does show that there are some gaps between the schools, but as you dig down into those numbers and start to compare kids that are very much similar, you find that those gaps start to disappear. Now, the problem is, within every school, there are gaps in achievement between different population types, and that's a very concerning statistic and something that we really have to do something about. Every child, regardless of where they come from and under what circumstances they're brought up, deserves a good, quality education, and education is really the key to the mobility in our society. So, that's the real gap that we need to look at, not between the schools, but the gaps that exist within the schools.
Well, continuing on the topic of measuring performance, we want to ask, what should the school board's role be in establishing the kind of performance measurements or metrics that we use to determine success? Ms. Hallett will begin with you.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
What should be the school board's role in establishing metrics for measuring schools' success or performance?
Well, I'm not sure. I'm new here. I haven't been a part of the school board yet. That's one question I wasn't prepared to answer, but I do think that you need to surround yourself with experts in the industry and make sure that you're aligning your curriculum with, closely with, state standards and gathering input from people around you who can help us make sure that we're maintaining and achieving our goals.
Mr. Swanson, what should be the school board's role in establishing metrics for measuring success and performance in the schools?
Measuring the success of performance in schools is a combination of responsibilities between the school board and district administrative staff. We have enjoyed, over the course of the last year, a good relationship with a company called TeamWorks that has been working very closely with administration and with the school board members and the community members, quite frankly. We've had many sessions where we've taken in feedback from district citizens, from parents, from administrators, from teachers, and we have boiled all that information down into a major strategic plan that has very specific visioning cards, and there's going to be very specific metrics that'll be attached to each vision and goal that are out there. And all of that information is ultimately going to be put out for our citizens to be able to absorb, so they can see absolute and direct accountability for every single school, every building, every grade, every goal that we've set up. They're going to know exactly what's expected and how we're doing, and we are going to be held accountable accordingly.
Well, members of the Chamber of Commerce recently had an opportunity to visit with ninth graders here in the Shakopee School District, and there was one issue beyond others on their mind, and that is the issue of the recommendation to have a second high school as part of an upcoming bond referendum. And so, we have several questions that arise from that interaction related to a second high school potentially. The first question that we want to ask on the topic is this: In the event that the district goes with a plan that includes two high schools, how should the district implement that plan when it comes to curriculum offerings? Mr. Casper will begin with you.
So, in terms of the second high school, assuming that the voters approve it in March, one of the things going forward that the board has talked about, which I think they have done a very good job on, is making sure that the schools are equal. So, in some ways, we are in a nice situation here. We're talking about a second school that's just a mile down the road. It will be fairly close in age to the existing school. There's talk about using the existing footprint. So, we'll have two buildings that are very similar in there. That then allows the district to implement a curriculum that's very similar. All along, the board has said we need to make sure that the curriculum is equal between the two schools, much like they are doing right now in the middle school levels and the elementary levels.
Ms. Romansky, what would curriculum look like between two high schools, if there were to be two?
Well, I have to agree because he just stated the board's plan is to keep the schools as similar as possible. Obviously, there are some things that we may not have, the student count that's sufficient to support a program at a particular school, such as woodworking or some of those other technical courses. So, we would offer the students the opportunity to attend the other school if they're interested in that particular subject, but otherwise, we're going to try to keep the curriculum as similar as possible between both schools.
Has thought been given, then, just as a follow-up to the two of you, to what impact this curricular pattern would have on personnel costs for the district?
Personnel costs?
Either. Mr. Casper, we'll let you go first if you'd like.
Oh, sure. So, in terms of personnel costs, whether, you know, we have a big, large high school or that, we still have to have the teachers that fill the room. One of the things that we've talked about with the second high school is the idea that, since they're so close apart from each other, that we can have a teacher that can specialize in AP Physics, that can teach a couple of classes here at this building, then quickly drive down the street to the next school to be able to teach AP Physics and not have to worry about, okay, do we have the necessary teaching staff to be able to do that? And especially when you start to get into other things like talking about maybe Japanese language, you know? It's not something that you can have a full-time teacher at each building, but hey, we can have one teacher between two schools, which really makes it easier to do than even currently right now.
Ms. Romansky?
We have given thought to the cost of opening a new high school, the additional costs that come with it. When we opened this high school, it was about $1.2 million in additional staffing. That includes everything from electrical service to teaching to administration. We are sitting aside that money, so when we open the new school, we will have that money, and we will not need an operating referendum.
Okay. As big as the curriculum question is, for the students, extracurricular activities were a large issue as well. So, again, in the event that the district does go with a two-high-school plan, how should the district implement that plan when it comes to extracurricular activities? Mr. Berg, we'll begin with you.
Well, I believe the district should have a great deal of flexibility in how they approach that. In some cases, the right answer might be to have two full schools, full teams, B-teams, et cetera. In other cases, that might not be the case, and in some cases, they may actually, between the two combined schools, be able to field something that they have never had before, perhaps an orchestra band, perhaps a marching band. We are just starting with lacrosse, and perhaps, you know, adding a one team might be the right solution initially, and further down the road, it might be two varsity teams. So, I think there's going to need to be a great deal of flexibility in how they go about identifying what those co-curriculars look like, but I don't think it's going to be, one model's going to fit all like you would see in a single school.
Ms. Hallett, what do you think? How should the district approach extracurricular activities if there are two high schools?
I think extracurricular activities are one of our underlying reasons for going to two high schools. Participation is very important. Keeping kids engaged in extracurricular activities are proven to help keep them out of trouble, and it's one of the things that we really need to focus on. So, if we are going to go to two high schools, if that's the district, the direction the district has decided, I think we need to, we need to show the kids that we are going to provide them as many opportunities as possible. So, if we can possibly field two teams or field two programs, we need to do that for the kids. We need to make sure that as many kids are participating as possible. There will be instances where there just aren't enough kids to field two, two full teams or two full programs, and in that case, eventually, hopefully, they'll grow when we can, but until then, we'll...
Well, the ninth graders that we spoke with had two very particular concerns. They wanted to know, just as a follow-up to the two of you, Mr. Berg will begin with you. What do you think? Two football teams, two bands? How do you see that working?
I see it working really quite well. You know, I know that people think that is going to be the one piece that divides this town, and, you know, this is a town that doesn't necessarily need to be divided. I think this community is so much better than that. I think we can have two teams in one community, and I think we can get behind two teams. Think of the wonderful opportunity to be able to go to a football game every Friday night instead of just every other Friday night, and think of those proud moments when you get to have both teams go out there together and share with the community their spirit. I don't think it's going to be a problem, quite honestly. I think it's going to end up becoming a very big strength for us.
Ms. Hallett, two football teams, two bands?
Yes. I know that for some people, they would like to see some of our teams and programs stay together, possibly to win some state championships or to be more competitive, but my belief is that the more students that you can have participating, the better we'll be, and we need to keep in mind that we won't necessarily be in the same conference that we're in now. And so, we'll make those decisions based on how the enrollment at the schools, how big the programming is, and we'll decide the appropriate conference so that we do stay competitive, even if we have two teams.
Backing away just for a minute from the issue of the high schools themselves, but staying on the topic of the referendum, some voters have asked whether the referendum should provide for additional athletic facilities. Specifically, do you believe that the district should work on a plan for a second sheet of ice for hockey? This is a perennial question, but here it is with a referendum. Ms. Romansky, a second sheet of ice for hockey?
Well, if you survey all the different schools in the state of Minnesota, there isn't one school that owns and operates a hockey facility. I firmly believe that the school district should partner with the community and the city council to work and obtain another facility for that, but I don't believe it's the school's responsibility to build another ice, sheet of ice at this time.
Mr. Casper?
I think Mary said it fairly well. Yeah, I don't think it's something of the school necessarily being the one to spearhead building a hockey arena, but I think it's one of those, if the district's going to have a hockey team, we might put it forward, we might have, using up the ice time and that, then they need to be involved, partner, but, you know, it's a partner with someone else that we need to find. I don't think, in terms of this thing here, that hockey is necessarily the one that we need to worry about with this bonding referendum, but...
Hockey is one push point that parents and students have identified, that having additional athletic teams would put on district facilities. What other push points would you see having two high schools would put on facilities? Just as a follow-up, so Ms. Romansky will let you respond first.
Some of the problems that may come as a result of having two teams would obviously be working with the booster clubs and other team support groups. And when we visited Ankeny, Iowa, they gave us an interesting scenario. They just opened their new high school this year after building two high schools in their city, and they said the best option they have is to have one booster team for both teams within the community. That way, businesses and other people in the community that support these teams wouldn't be torn between supporting one or the other. That would be a really difficult thing for a lot of the businesses who support our schools so much to make a decision, do I support high school A or support high school B? This way, everybody could support Shakopee.
Mr. Casper?
In terms of push points, one of the things that I like about the bonding referendum is the fact that we're talking about, you know, upgrading our shared-use facility over at West, so that then both schools will be able to use it, that we will be able to make it so that multiple sports can use it. So, right now, the field is pretty much, you can only use it once during the week because otherwise it gets too beat up. So, now, hopefully, with a shared field that has artificial turf, now all of a sudden we can talk about not only football, we could talk about soccer and lacrosse, and now that's a facility that can be used for multiple sports across multiple teams. And now, it's a single facility, so hopefully then you can get the community around a single facility, not just one school or the other school, it's both schools, and that can kind of help pull everybody together.
Staying again with...
Rob, can I, can I?
Yes.
I'd like to use my, one of my rebuttals, if I can.
Absolutely.
I just want to throw out the idea that the decision about extracurriculars and what's going to happen with facilities with respect to sports and/or two bands and football and so on and so forth, it's not going to be made in a vacuum, and it's not going to be made independently, exclusively by the board. It's going to be made based on a lot of collaboration with the existing coaches, with the musicians, with the folks that are actually the booster clubs. These are people, just like from the environmental survey we had when we had some of these conversations on building the school, these are next natural steps that are going to have to be taken, working together as a larger group to make sure that the decisions are made, everybody can get behind. The board is here to support those decisions and ultimately, from a government's model, make the final call, but those decisions are going to be made with a great deal of support from the citizens.
Thank you. Again, continuing on this topic of this two-high schools, what would you, as a board, do to prevent open enrollment from stacking athletic teams at one of the two high schools or possibly from stacking other curricular or extracurricular options? Ms. Hallett will begin with you.
We visited Ankeny and Lakeville to see how they accomplished their goals of enrollment in the first few years of their opening. I would recommend that we, for at least the first few years, possibly the first five years, we close enrollment. We give each school an opportunity with the kids who live in their defined areas to create their own identities. Now, we do see at Lakeville that they have opened enrollment, they've loosened it a little bit, and they have noticed that each school is sort of creating their own identity, and it seemed to be a positive for them. So, I think there are ways it can be done well, but I would say for the first five years or so, whatever is determined to be appropriate, that the kids have to stay where they are assigned.
Mr. Berg, open enrollment.
I hadn't really given this a whole lot of thought, and I got to tell you, Sean's idea is not a bad one, but pick a number, and I don't know what that number is, but I think that's one where you really have to go out to your community. You're going to have to work with your booster clubs, you're going to have to work with your coaches, because it could very well become a problem or at least a perceived problem, and you don't want to end up with one high school being the football high school or one high school being, you know, the band high school. You want schools that are known first and foremost for the education that they give to their kids. When I was going to school, they weren't called co-curriculars, they were extracurriculars. This was something extra that we were able to do. And when I went to school, I first went to school to the Shakopee Public School, so we didn't have all that much opportunity. We had, you know, the traditional three sports, you know, fall, winter, and spring. So, what a wonderful thing that we are talking about all the extra opportunity that we're providing for our kids. We just don't want it to become a problem. So, I think we need to enlist everybody to make sure that this doesn't become a problem, that we have to take heavy-handed measures such as limiting open enrollment.
Thank you. Backing up to the larger issue, which is the student population that has been expanding, when do you see the current student population bubble peaking and beginning to decline? And we'll begin with Mr. Casper.
So, the district just came out with the latest 10-year project, projection of what student enrollment is, and we're looking at in about 10 years, we're going to add in about 2,000 extra students to the district. That would put the ninth, 12th grade in around 3,300 students. Looking at the numbers, those are students that are already here, as they've talked about that, 3,300 students. So, that's not taking into account any of the 4,500 jobs that we've talked about. That's none of any new housing developments that might all of a sudden pop up. We've heard rumblings that there might be a few more developments going on around town. Those aren't included in those projections. So, I don't think we're starting to see it at the point yet where Shakopee's hitting that peak of enrollment. Will it increase as quickly as it has in the past? Probably not, but we're still seeing some increase there in the projections.
Mr. Swanson, when do you see the enrollment peaking in Shakopee Public Schools?
I don't see it peaking anytime soon. That's the short answer. We have utilized Hazel Reinhardt and her enrollment projections for a number of years in the district, and her projections have been spot-on, if not conservative, and we've actually brought in more students than her projections that even anticipated. As I mentioned earlier, Jeremy mentioned as well, the initial 2,000 students we expect inside of the next 10 years is just, could be a drop in the bucket. The fact of the matter is, there is a great deal of square footage in Shakopee that has yet to be developed, and as a result, we're not in a position to talk about a bubble other than where are we 10 years from now? And is it really responsible to look too much farther than that because there's so many other factors that could potentially influence it one way or the other? So, to that end, we don't have an end in sight just yet.
Moving to the topic of student safety, what challenges do we face in keeping our students safe, and what can we do about those challenges? Mr. Berg will begin with you.
Probably the biggest issue with student safety now, quite honestly, is an area that is very tough to get your hands around and very tough for a school district to do very much about, and that has to do with cyberbullying. It allows kids to become anonymous and yet pick on others, and that's a, that's a new threat, a threat that didn't exist when I was in school. You know, we used to, we used to have some problems, you know, and there would be some fights, and that was kind of where it was left. Now, things have a tendency to fester and to, to really grow into much bigger issues because they get started in such a easy, in such a anonymous way. Now, just last week, at homecoming, or the day of homecoming, with the anti-bullying efforts that they did at the middle schools, we need to do a lot more of those types of things, and actually, to see the responses of some of the kids that had attended that cyberbullying or anti-bullying rally was wonderful to see, and we need to do a lot more of that education up front.
Ms. Romansky, what do you see are the challenges to keeping our students safe, and what can we do about those challenges?
It's very difficult to know what will happen in a school. People at Sandy Hook had no idea, and they were not totally prepared because you never know. I had the opportunity... had no idea, and they were not totally prepared because you never know. I had the opportunity to attend a seminar put on by the State Highway Patrol where the police officer from Sandy Hook spoke, and also the police officer from Milwaukee whom had the Sikh temple attack. And I put that question to him, how do we keep our students safe short of making it like a reverse prison? Because we want our public and we want our families to become part of the school system, and the thing that they said was, there isn't anything that you can do to stop them. The safest thing that you can do for students is to create as many obstacles as you can to keep an intruder from entering the school, and that's what we're trying to do with our safety levy that we have on the ballot in March.
Mr. Berg?
You know, talking about the safety action within the schools, and I happen to be on the board during a time that we built three new schools, and it was funny to note that as we build these schools, it used to be you built large buildings with an eye toward how you could get people out. How open could you make them so that you could get them out? Because the biggest threat was a fire. Now, we build these schools and have built most of our current schools with an eye to how we can lock them down. So, we do actually, we are putting a great deal of security in. We have cameras in most of our buildings, and actually in the referendum, we've got, add some more money for more security, and we have buildings that we can lock down and keep students very safe. But as Mary noted, how do you stop that one crazy person?
Obviously, being the Chamber of Commerce, one of our concerns is business and employment. So, we want to ask this evening, what is the school system doing to ensure that graduates are ready for employment? Mr. Swanson?
What is the school district doing to make sure our students are ready for employment? I would suggest that we're not quite doing enough at this particular point. For me, that is one of the biggest areas of focus for me, is providing opportunities, and not just limiting opportunities to college or to those particular areas that we expect kids are going to go. We would love nothing more than to see every child that leaves Shakopee High School go to college, and then from there, go on, having taken some, you know, college prep courses, and go on to be hugely successful in some kind of a fantastic industry. However, the very real truth is that not every student is going to be ready for college. Not every student is made to go to college. And to that end, what are we doing for those kids? What are we doing to provide those, those youth that might actually be better at a particular trade or trademarking something? For me, it's more important that we're creating the opportunities for everybody to make sure that not just a small percentage are making it successful in a career, but everybody does.
Ms. Howlett, what is the school system doing, or should it do, to ensure that graduates are ready for employment?
I agree with almost all of what Mr. Swanson said. I do think that we are doing a great job in one area in particular. We have a great college in the schools and advanced placement programming, and we are recognized throughout the metro as having a really strong program with those types of classes, which do help prepare our students for post-secondary education if they choose to go that path. One area that I think that we are not doing as great a job, and maybe should focus more energy on, is I can't think of a job that in the future won't rely on technology in some way, shape, or form. And I do believe that we need to be doing a better job of getting technology into the hands of our students because it's proven to increase their engagement in school, it's proven to help teachers teach more challenging subject matter, and it's giving, it will give them life skills that they need to help succeed after graduation.
Mr. Berg, 30 second follow-up?
If I could. Sean actually just shared one very strong thing. As a person who's hired a number of students that have come out of Shakopee schools, I can tell you, they often come without the requisite skills that I need to see them have in the workplace, technology being one really strong component of that. It was a shame earlier in the year to see the board actually have the opportunity to put iPads into many more classrooms, and they chose not to do that. However, another area that is very important is continuing education. I know in my own field, and I know most people in their field, that they have to continually educate themselves. And where do they turn to do that? They turn online. So, we need to start integrating more online education into the school day, starting at the high school level, so that they can continue to keep themselves prepared for jobs that don't even exist today.
Ms. Romansky, 30 seconds?
A really well-kept secret in the district is our Southwest Metro Co-op, and we, for kids that maybe not, do not want to go to college, we offer them different opportunities to see if they'll like certain careers. We offer things from construction trades, photography, criminal justice, agriculture, cosmetology. This gives the students a chance sometimes to even complete some credit hours needed for when they go to their tech schools, but it also gives them a chance to explore and find out if they'd be interested in that job occupation.
Candidates, we want to thank you for those responses. The next set of questions, each one of you will have an opportunity to answer. And our first question really deals with board processes, and we want to ask you, what has the school board gotten right in the past two years, and what has the school board gotten wrong? If you could give an example of both right and wrong in the past two years, Mr. Casper will begin with you.
So, some of the areas that I think the school board has done a very good job of in the past few years is, one, hiring, Rod, that definitely has helped Superintendent Thompson, like the direction that he's bringing to the district. Some of the things he's done there that I really like that the school board has supported him on is the new person to look at data and all, data analysis of test scores to kind of help teachers figure out what's working in the classroom, what's not working, to help teachers improve, so that as we talk about these test scores and we look at them, building by building, class by class, they can start to get that improved and figure out what's working, what's not working. Some of the areas also that I think they've done a better job on is improving technology. Two years ago, honestly, technology in the district was kind of a joke. It's still not quite there yet, but it's getting there further along. Some of the areas that they haven't done well, I think, is trying to push technology even further, as Chuck mentioned, on the iPads. All of a sudden, one day, we're in a meeting talking about how the district's going to go toward iPads, and then next week, it's, they're recommending not to go for it, which was just a shock from what we were hearing in the meeting. So, that was...
Ms. Howlett, what has the school board gotten right in the past two years, and what has the school board gotten wrong?
In the last couple of years, or the last two years in particular, one thing that I think that they have gotten right is implementing our professional learning communities within our schools. This allows teachers to collaborate and use data-driven best practices in the classroom to help our children achieve their highest potential. One of the things that I would like to see more of is communication from the board, the superintendent, and the administration, to our staff and to our families, because I, I believe that what they are doing is they're using a lot of great information and data. They are doing their homework, but they're not necessarily disseminating that information to the community. And I really believe that a strong, an informed community is a strong community.
Ms. Romansky?
Could you repeat the question, please?
In the past two years, what has the school board gotten right, and what has the school board gotten wrong?
A few things, I like to think we got a few things right. One, we've created like a differentiation in learning, creating different groups, reading groups, to help students achieve better. We've worked on, and I think we've done a major improvement in our test scores. What we've done wrong, I'd say what we haven't paid attention to, I think, is getting more of our community involved. We have so many different communities within our community, and oftentimes, when we have meetings or public gatherings, there are groups that are missing, and we need to reach them so that we know how to educate their students and get them more involved, and make them feel like they're part of the community.
Mr. Swanson?
Lots of great answers. So, I'll just try to recap here. Hiring, yes, we're doing a great job with hiring, I love it. Strategic planning is fantastic. PLCs, professional learning communities that Sean mentioned, are going very, very well, as well as adopting a governance model for the board to make sure that we're not in the minutia, we're not picking out covered squares, we're actually focusing on the strategic elements of our job. That's super important. The things that I don't think we're doing super well, and I would agree with Mary and somebody else that indicated as well, is the communication. Generally speaking, we have a lot of great work that's been done, but not everybody knows about it, and we've got to get our message out there. And we've got a great communications individual that's come on board, and I see great things in our future as a result of that. An example of something right and wrong would be tech. Tech in the past has not necessarily gone the direction we'd like it to go, and Chuck indicated that we ended up taking a step back on the iPod, or the iPad, rather, one-to-one. To me, that was the right thing to do, because the fact of the matter is, we are refocusing on the infrastructure in our buildings and making sure that we're not throwing new technology after bad, and we're making the appropriate strategic decisions now so that long-term, we're going to ultimately win.
Mr. Berg, one thing that the school board has gotten right and one wrong from the past two years?
You know, there, when it comes to improving student achievement, that has been a laser focus of this board, and they've done a marvelous job in that. In the six years I was on the board, we saw graduation rates actually go up 12%, and they're continuing. We saw, we turned the corner, even during a bad economy, and saw test scores start to rise, and they're continuing to rise. So, they have done a marvelous job on keeping a laser focus on student achievement. Now, I'm going to echo what many people said here in terms of what they've done wrong. As I walk around the community, the comments I get are, what are we going to do about the runaway spending? They're just spending money like it's going out of style. And I'm not so sure that they are, Rob, or anybody. What I think is really happening is they're not going out and making the case to the public, and keeping them well-informed, so they understand what they're spending the money on, and making sure that the public is getting the value for the tax dollars that they spend. Communication has got to improve.
Our next question is really about you all as candidates. We're asking this evening, what differentiates you from other candidates, and we'll begin with Ms. Howlett.
I have worked in the schools for the past five years. I have almost daily conversations with teachers and administration and staff, and I believe that during those conversations, we talk about the frustrations within the district, and the challenges, and the successes. And I have a unique perspective in that I would like to bring all of those voices to the school board if I'm elected.
Ms. Romansky?
I have, I would like to say I would bring a little bit of experience to the school board, or continue to. Through the time I've been on the board, I've had the opportunity to meet a lot of the staff, a lot of the principals. I know the schools really well, and it gives me a unique opportunity to be able to say, I think that Jackson needs this, or we need another teacher here that seems, this one doesn't seem to quite be reaching the students. That's the kind of perspective I have, and people can come and talk to me and know that I will listen to them, and maybe not answer their problem or solve their problem, but they'll, they'll get an answer.
Mr. Swanson?
My angle would be this. I have three kids in the district right now. I've got two, my boys are at Eagle Creek, I've got a first grader and a fourth grader, and I also have a sixth grader at Pearson. Every one of my children, as well as their friends and their friends' friends, are going to be impacted by every decision that's made by this body, whether I'm on it or not. And so, as a result, I'm very close to exactly how these decisions are impacting the kids directly. I get the opportunity each spring to teach junior achievement, the basics of finances, financial, and basics of government to Eagle Creek kids. And so, I get to get inside the classroom and actually talk to the teachers and talk to the kids, and try to figure out what, what's going on there, be in the buildings. I would also say that basically what I bring from the, you know, my business acumen from the professional world, you know, working for Wells Fargo for 17 years in leadership role, I bring a lot of collaboration, strategic planning, and again, that, the ability to partner and listen more than I talk in some cases, and I'm a talker, I will admit that. I fully admit that. Those are the kinds of things that I'm going to bring to the table and perspectives that I'm going to bring.
Mr. Berg? I'd like to believe I bring a great deal and great breadth of leadership experience, both on the board for six years. But you know, I think about my time in Rotary, and that's an organization of business leaders. And I feel very proud that they chose me to lead the 60 disparate clubs into one unified direction. A group of leaders chose me to lead them, and that was a very proud moment in my life. I also bring a lot of critical thinking experience. Let's face it, I'm a nerd. When people have a problem with their computers in Shakopee, they come to me because I'm a pretty darn good nerd. But we think in a pretty logical way, and things have to kind of flow through that good logical path. So, if something's not working, why isn't it working? If we try this, what does that do? If that doesn't work, then this should be the next step we take. And sometimes, that serves you very well. Last night, I was in a meeting, and there was just a comment thrown out that they're going to have to start evaluating teachers in the elementary, so they think that we need to add an assistant principal at every elementary. Well, that's about 80,000 times five, that's $400,000 for doing reviews. That's about 300 hours. Maybe a teacher's special assignment would be a better option.
Mr. Casper?
So, my background in IT, I'm a very analytical person. One of the things I always like to do is, when something's presented to me, is what are the options available? So, as we look at the second high school, it's, is this really the best option? Looking out there, I'd say it is. So, one of the things is, on other board business, it'd be asking the same thing of, not just, what's this option, what are all the options? Did you do your full research? And also, I will not vote on anything that I do not have a full understanding for. So, I will always go through and make sure that I understand every issue as much as possible. Other thing is, I have a daughter in the district, I have two upcoming kids, but one of the things I realize is, I don't represent everyone in Shakopee with my experience. So, I might have an experience as a father of a first grader, that might be exactly different than the other classmates in my sister's class, or my daughter's class, sorry. So, my feeling on that is, you need to get out, and you need to talk to people, and figure out what everybody's experiences are, so you can come to the best decision.
Again, on the topic of, of business, we're wondering how you could maximize the partnership between business and education in the community, and really, we would like to hear an example. So, how would you maximize the business/educational partnerships in our community, and give us, please, an example? Ms. Romansky, we'd start with you on this one.
We've already begun that in the schools, especially with their program called Project Lead Way. We actually bring in engineers and people from other parts, aspects of engineering that come in and are mentors to our students, and tell them what it's like in the real world, and get them more interested in that. We are also doing that with our HOSA program, which is our health occupation program. We partner with St. Francis Hospital to, with kids that are interested in the medical careers. But there are many more opportunities, and as a school board member, I would welcome any business that wants to participate and work with the school district. Please come in, and we'll be happy to give you the students to work with that are interested in your, your particular topic.
Mr. Swanson?
Couple of examples. One would be junior achievement. There's no better way to get inside the classroom than to actually volunteer to teach junior achievement at whatever grades are available. And I promise you, I know for a fact that there are teachers in our district that are hungry and need willing business men and women to come in and actually teach their kids. So, that's the first thing, and that's an opportunity we could capitalize on right now, today. Other opportunities, in addition to the ones that Mary mentioned, would be, if we look at the arts, I work with the River Valley Theater Company. I've actually taken a little bit of a step back due to my school board role, but there's an opportunity there to get youth that are interested in the arts, access to things outside of high school, access to what it's actually going to be like to work in a theater, whether it's on an administrative side, or onstage or backstage. There are lots of opportunities that as long as the district teachers and staff are actually willing to partner with community members as well as business members, we can provide our kids all kinds of opportunities. We just have to have the courage to bring those opportunities forward, and we need that partnership with district staff and the individual business owners.
Mr. Berg?
Well, I'm going to first challenge the assumption perhaps that that's not happening. I would challenge you to find a school district that's doing a better job of working with their local community members and their businesses. Paula Rizlin, who's in the audience here, is our volunteer coordinator, and she could probably cite you about the tens of thousands of hours that are spent with, from our local businesses. I can give you some really good examples. In the Rotary, we work in a program called Strive. It's students, students are, yeah, I'm not going to try. Students are realizing the value in education, but we work with the bottom 25% of the class, we invite them in. And the business leaders in our community go in and they sit with them, and they talk about things like how to interview for a job, how to go out and select a college, and to fill out the paperwork, and how to apply for a scholarship, real-life skills that they're going to need in, in life. And there are just literally hundreds of those types of things are happening, and if there's... And if there's something that is not happening, think that the community can provide, especially a business committee, just ask them. They'll do it.
Thank you. Mr. Casper?
I think this is an area where the chamber comes in really nicely. Here you have, you know, a group of businesses in the local community, so it's a nice central point of reference for the district, having good relationships with them so you can kind of go to them and say, hey, here are opportunities. And then the chamber can communicate that out to the various businesses. Because that's one of the issues, is just getting the opportunities out there for people of, hey, we have these opportunities, as Scott said with the project achieved, to get people in, hey, we need people. Great way to get it out. And then also, one of the things as we've talked about in previous questions is, you know, employment in that is, we don't look at where our students are five, 10 years from now. And what we should really be doing is kind of finding out, hey, what are colleges feeling that our students are lacking? What are the businesses finding? And really look at that and say, hey, now let's go back to the businesses and say, hey, is there opportunities where you guys can come and help kind of fill in these gaps that might not be something that's core to the district's mission?
Ms. Hallett?
They've all said some great things. I would like to talk a little bit more about JA, Junior Achievement in the classroom because I think that's an opportunity that we have, that we could grow upon because I happen to be the volunteer coordinator for some of our schools. And some of our schools aren't participating in that program. And I know that we have partnerships in the community that would like to be a part of that program. And I think that comes down to just making sure that our principals and our administration are aware of the opportunities there. I'm also, I also think we are doing a great job, that HOSA's a fantastic program and that some of these opportunities that our students have to partner in the community already with some of our organizations out there are great. And I'd like to continue to grow that.
Our time is beginning to run out. So anyone who's not had an opportunity to get the question that you have for the candidates asked and answered this evening should take an opportunity to ask the candidates directly or contact their campaign offices. But now we'll give each candidate one minute to make a closing statement and we'll begin again with Mr. Berg.
Well, thank you, Rob. And thank you once again to the chamber and the school district for allowing us the opportunity to have this event. Again, I come to you with experience, I come to you with leadership experience, with business experience, and I'm out there in the community every day. I work here in the community, I volunteer in this community, and I talk with people all of the time. I'd like to think I have a fairly good pulse. Could I know everybody in this committee? Of course not. And I actually have one disadvantage in that I no longer have kids in this school district. But I will say that my two daughters, who are now 24 and 21, one graduated from St. Olaf, the other a senior at St. Thomas this year, got a great education that prepared them for that college experience. And they're going to have very good, successful lives because this is a school district that really cares about the quality of the education they give to their students. I'd like one more opportunity to serve you and if given that opportunity, I'll serve you as faithfully as well as I can. Thank you.
Mr. Casper?
Again, I'd like to thank everyone who put this on, the chamber, Shakopee Schools. It's very nice to see the community and how involved all the different organizations are. So again, one of my things is, education is key. When we talk about success, really getting a good education is the key to a future success. Some of the areas that I want to definitely see improvement on in the next four years is improving student achievement. We've done a good job moving it forward, I want to continue seeing that get moved even further along. Managing enrollment growth. We are adding 2,000 students here, we are going to be asking the taxpayers to fund a referendum thing here. We need to make sure we are being the best stewards of their resources and that we are only going to them with what's absolutely necessary. Other thing is, all-day kindergarten, we've, the board has approved it, that will start next year. Thing I want to make sure is that that shows results. So five years from now, we're not seeing any improvements. I want to know why. That is something that needs to be shown for all the extra investment we're putting in. Again, I'd ask for your vote and thank you very much.
Ms. Hallett?
Thank you to the chamber and to Shakopee Schools for hosting this for us tonight. I first want to do a quick little shout-out to Jeremy. I don't know if you know that he made quite a personal sacrifice to be here tonight and I really appreciate his dedication to our students. You know, I want to say that my son, my seventh grader, has a four-foot saber paw on his bedroom wall. And the transition that we are going through is really important and I think that we need to have collaboration with the community, we need to have collaboration with the administration and a lot of experts to make sure that this transition is done well. And we can do that. We have the ability to do that. We are a great community. So the other thing I'd just like to quick say is that when I was younger, I didn't really feel the need to be involved in local politics. Arguably, who you vote for on November 5th will direct, or will directly impact your life even more so than a national election. I'd really like to encourage you all to take it out and vote.
Ms. Romansky?
Thank you to the chamber and to everyone else who made this event possible. I've had the pleasure of serving on the school board when there was approximately 3,000 students in our district and now we've grown to well over 7,700. And it's been a really wonderful trip for me to go, go on to watch each student succeed, to go to graduation and to see these kids and know that they've made it. There's nothing that gives me greater joy to share in their success and I would like to opportunity to be able to do that again.
Mr. Swanson?
I'll echo everyone else's thanks as well, Rob, and to the chamber and to Shakopee Schools for providing this opportunity tonight. I want to start out by saying, our district isn't going to be successful by accident. It's going to be very, very intentional. It's going to take a lot of leadership, as I said before, it's going to take a lot of strategic planning, a lot of commitment, it's going to take a lot of collaboration, it's going to take fiscal responsibility. And at the end of the day, if all of those elements come together, we're going to have a great thing here for our students. And that's all we're here. Every, I wrote down, if whatever decisions we make don't positively impact student achievement, then we're making the wrong decisions. And that's just a fact. That's just how it goes. Some of the decisions we're going to have to make over the course of the next four years are going to be tough. But I think with communication and transparency, we're going to get people to understand exactly why we have to do what we need to do and they'll see that it's the right thing. I'm going to tell you all and those watching at home, there are four seats available, there's five great people. No matter how this goes down, this town's going to be in good shape. I just hope that my skills and talents are something that will allow me to have one of those seats. Thank you.
And I would remind you once again this evening that the views expressed are those of our candidates, not of the chamber and visitors bureau or of the Shakopee Public Schools. Sponsoring this debate does not represent an endorsement by the chamber or the school district of any particular candidate. Thank you to those of you who are in the audience this evening, to our hosts, the Shakopee Public Schools, to Shakopee Kids Voting, and to the Chamber and Visitors Bureau. Thank you as well to our candidates. We appreciate you being here this evening and we appreciate the contributions that you make to our community by running for office. Election Day is Tuesday, November 5th. Please remember to vote. Thank you and good evening.